We also have a special guest from Alabama. We got the County Commissioner Terry Howell, who's in town visiting some family, who's joined us this morning. Apparently he has not gotten his fill of Commissioner meetings in Alabama, so. But thank you for joining us.
Morning.
All right, first up, the executive session from February 28th, Grant?
Yes, it was advertised for a specific purpose. The only thing that was discussed in that meeting is that which was advertised. Are there any questions about that? Please let myself or one of us know. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Then everyone should have received a copy of the February 28th meeting minutes. Were there any changes or revisions?
Nothing I've seen.
That's all, man.
Yeah, the entertaining motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Next up, we have the Highway Department, Chris. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Chris.
Guess the first thing I'll bring up, I don't really have any project updates. Montgomery Bridge, I think we had been advertising the sixth was going to be, March 6th was going to be the construction date, starting construction date, and they put that off till the 15th, which would be this Wednesday. That's the actual construction date. That doesn't mean the bridge is going to be closed that day, but they'll let off. We've been in touch with the local businesses and school, letting them know. I forgot to let you Commissioners know, me and Nathan had talked about, I forgot to let you guys know when they moved the date. We're kind of scrambling around to let everybody know that they moved the date. You don't have to change your bus routes and stuff like that for the school. Got to let you guys know. But the 15th is, they're going to be on site. They've been mobilizing some stuff, I guess. And they'll probably have a week and a half to two weeks of construction, constructing a road around the doctor's office there, in front of the doctor's office, before they actually close the bridge permanently, before they demo the bridge. I think the timeline was, 28th was for demoing, but that's not quite two weeks, so they might push the demo back. Might be some soft closures in the, you know, the next couple of weeks, but that would be the update on the bridge.
Does that push the completion date back?
No, they, the completion date stays the same.
And what date was that due? I don't remember. I know it's November.
I don't know if I remember. It was an eight month, eight month, you know, I don't know if I remember that.
About the middle of November, then.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just trying to think, you know, what's, again, with the end in mind, you know, we get, start getting to Thanksgiving, and then basketball season starts up, and then just that, that gets to be a whole hornet's nest.
I think they had, I think they were talking about like October 28th, but I don't, it was when they were wanting to have it done, but that wasn't the final date. I don't remember. I apologize about that.
No worries, no worries.
But no, that, that date stays the same whether, whether they started when they said they were going to start or not. The sixth was the first day that they could start.
Okay.
With a project like that, though, I mean, you would think they'd want to start, but I guess they got a plan.
I'm sure, I'm sure they do, as long as we try to draw the line that before Thanksgiving is, got to have that bridge done before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I'll look the date up and let you know, for sure.
No worries, no worries. All right, thank you.
The next thing on there was the bridge inspection, the countywide bridge inspection. I got Michael Stevenson here with SJCA, that's going to be conducting our bridge inspection, I guess, to present the agreement with you guys for, for signature. I know, I sent it to Grant a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if you've seen any issues with it or not. I'd, I'd looked it over and I sent it to, we're required to send it to NDOT. We sent it to two different agencies and NDOT to look at the agreement that they sent us, to see if it follows their guidelines and their compliance and their, I don't know how you'd say it, their, their cost associated with the, the.
Looks like Don Spielman's buying coffee for everyone this morning.
Yeah, I get it. But, yeah, they, they, they sent it back to us and said everything looked like it was in compliance as far as the workload that they were going to do and the cost associated with it. But I don't know if you've seen anything with it or not, Grant.
I did not spend a lot of time looking at it. I did not see any issues with it. It looked like what we'd done in the past. My thought would be, and I apologize, I didn't spend a lot of time looking at it, but if, if we're needing to proceed today, that's fine. And if I've got issues, I will follow up with you, but I don't believe I've got any.
Yeah, and, and we, we really, on the countywide bridge inspection, we need to follow through with that today, to stay in compliance with our, our June date. Otherwise, we're going to be noncompliance with NDOT, and that creates a whole mess with the, because they're paying 80% of it.
I mean, we've obviously have done these a number of times in the past, so as long as there's no material changes, then there won't be any.
Yeah, this is the same company that we just did one with, so if Michael wants to come up here and present that to you guys for signature, you can ask him some questions if you need to.
Thanks, Chris. Michael Stevenson with SJCA. Again, as Chris said, this is the boilerplate contract that EndUp puts together, so this is, basically, we are required to use this contract as well. I'll give it to you, and I do have three copies if we can get two of them signed, and I can keep one and you can keep one. I would have just printed two, because it's a huge document, but our Director of Bridge Inspection sent an email to Chris saying we would send three, so you got three. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to try to answer them. There's four places that need to have marked, markings. The first one is a date on page one, then there's signatures on page 1895 and 105, and they are marked on two of the copies.
And this is a, it's a lengthy document. If, if the Commissioners are wishing to proceed today, which it seems like maybe they are, maybe we approve it subject to your further review and further, and my further review, but I believe it's a standard.
It's standard document, it looks like to me, and.
So are the engineers located in Henry County, or what's, what's the Henry County references?
Oh, do we have a mistake?
We're also doing Henry County.
Yeah, perhaps.
How did you find a mistake like that? It's a 150-page document.
No karma.
I can get that page corrected. Yes, we're also doing bridge inspections in David, in Henry, Henry County as well.
Maybe explain, Michael, what's the timeline that, that we're on with this?
So Davies County has a June compliance month, meaning that is the month in which our Engineers have to be out physically looking at the bridges themselves. So this will be Phase One. There's also a Phase One A, a Phase Two, a Phase Two A. Phase One and Phase Two are the main phases where the majority of the work is done. All the bridges are inspected on Phase Two A and One A. There's very little that's actually done. I don't know, what else? We, we inspect them for, like, a routine inspection. If there are some bridges that need load ratings, fracture critical, there's underwater inspections, various types of inspections that the federal government requires that be done on these bridges. So this, this is what we are doing in order to get Davies County in compliance with NDOT. That answer your question?
And then we pay this out at, oh, there, MVH, is that?
Out of our Cambridge.
Your Cambridge. Oh, of course, of course.
And then they, like I said, it's 80% reimbursable.
Okay. I don't have any other questions?
Yeah, I'm good, too.
No problem, here.
Good.
I'll get that corrected, too.
Okay, no worries. I entertain a motion to approve pending the correction, unless you want to send the bill to Henry County. Or Calhoun County. Sorry.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero, and we'll, Commissioners, if you want to sign your two copies, we'll use those two as our original.
Yeah, I guess the rush to it is, NDOT, once they get this signed agreement back, they've got a lengthy process they have to go through. And I got an email last week, it wasn't a very kind email, but, but they're in a hurry to get it done, so. I do have a LPA invoice voucher, and it's from Lock Mueller, from the construction inspection of Kennelburg Road.
Four and five, if you guys decide.
I thought we were done with those.
I think we're getting closer. I thought the last one would be the last one.
I think by June, we'll, we'll.
Have it done.
Be completed. They're getting smaller, though.
Good, because we're running out of money. No, I'm kidding. So, so the mitigation site on the Olden Kennelburg Road, we're, we're just stuck with that mitigation site?
Yeah, the, the first phase of the Olden Kennelburg Road, when they did that, I can't think of when that, what year that started, but the way it was set up, that you had to buy mitigation sites directly within the proximity of your, your project that you were doing. So we picked, I guess, around 550 North and 500 North there. That's where they chose to put the mitigation sites. And then there are busy intersections, and they've growed out and people's cut them. I guess what happened, somebody went in and cut them, and then IDM seen it, and we didn't get fined, but we had to plant the trees back, and.
I seen your guys after putting trees back there one day.
We're getting complaints that it's blocking the view.
Because of the skew right there, yeah. That's on 500, right?
We was able to, we was able to move it back a couple of feet, and I think where the, it's surveyed out, where the line is, where the mitigation is, and then there's signs. And we were having guys that were afraid to mow up to the sign, and I say we mow right to the sign, but that's going to help. We can mow to the sign, but not pass the sign.
Okay.
So I think that will help. And it was designed by engineers for site view. What you run into, it's, you pull up there and stop and look, you can see a, a car coming. I think that road's 45 miles an hour, but you can see a 50, 50 mile, 55 mile an hour car for 500 feet, but if the car's going 70 miles an hour, you know, I don't think we've got very many intersections in the county. It's designed for that. And I think Gary's really, he's left, but he's been really patrolling that road lately, because it's a big, long stretch of road, and we've had people taking advantage of it, going faster than what they should, which causes problems.
Why are you looking at me for?
I don't know. You're looking at me.
You got heavy foot, what are you trying to say?
I'm trying to focus on somebody.
It's hard, it's hard to keep it under control.
The only I can do is I have to set, literally set my cruise control, go down through there, if not, I'm running 60, 70.
Well, I just wanted to bring it up. We did get a call in from some people going east west, that why are you guys planting trees there, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were, they were not happy that we had to put the trees back.
The trees are, they're not right big yet, but once they get bigger, it may be an issue where we have to keep them pruned back or something.
But really, the point is the root system, right, not the actual tree? I mean.
They want to keep it, it's in a ditch, and they want to keep the ditch from washing. It's all designed by like the Army Corps of Engineers.
So the root system is what holds that all together? So if we knock off, if we have to knock off the, the canopy or whatever?
Yes, anything, when it starts going over that imaginary line.
We can knock that off.
That, yeah, that imaginary vertical line, we can knock it off.
Are those mitigation sites forever, then?
They're monitored for 10 years. And we put in for an early, earlier release, and somewhere around the horse progress days, they got bushed back. And so we didn't get an early release, and I can't think of what the cost is that we pay, but we pay a couple thousand dollars a year probably for the monitor and continue monitor them sites. And if we got them, if we got them knocked off early, that just saves us money. So we're at seven years, and we don't have to start over, but we got to continue for another three years and maybe a couple additional years.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we brought that up. Any questions on the LPA voucher?
Nope, looks good.
We've got a voucher here for the Olden Kennelburg, Kennelburg Road project. The net amount of the claim's $8,064.08. I'd entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero.
Okay, the last thing on there is the old US Highway 50 relinquishment with the NDOT ad agreement. I think you guys have a copy of that. I don't know what you want me to.
Yeah, so I, I did have a discussion with Rusty Fowler last week. Just from a high level, philosophically, I always, I feel that the local unit of government needs to take over these pieces of highways that are no longer highways. At some point, it's going to be mandated, in, in my opinion. So I just asked him, how, how big of a deal was it? How urgent is it? And, you know, we're going to put him in a bind if we don't do it. And he was really nice about it. He said, look, it's not, it's not anything that's going to put him in a huge bind. They have a bucket of money for relinquishments, and if they don't use that money, then they've got to use it for other projects. But, because I said, look, this isn't a section of road that we're just, like, wanting to go and take over necessarily, but we will, because it should be a county road.
It's got a few issues, liability issues that we, I think the county needs to resolve.
Yes.
We went on NDOT, never get resolved.
Well, he mentioned that, too, and because, and I talked to Chris, and we do have a, an estimate for the bridge and, and an estimate for the overlay. And then one thing Rusty mentioned, too, is one, we could leverage that two and a half million dollars that's in the agreement for a federal project for an 80/20 match, and theoretically, you could get $12 million in, on a project, if and when we wanted to go and, and change that intersection and rebuild that road, and, and if we could turn that into a federal project, which probably wouldn't be a bad idea to discuss.
That's what I talked to Chris about, trying to alleviate that liability right there at the intersection.
Because we've got to make that intersection a 90 or something.
Something roundabout or whatever it takes to get it so it's safe, yeah. Everybody's going to love to hear a roundabout, but, you know, that, that, that area, the way the impacts keep happening are all T-bones. I mean, it's pretty serious collisions when they have that.
I think Gary stopped by and gave me some information. I think the average is seven and a half accidents a year, and we've been kind of internally, and we've previously been complaining about that road and that intersection, and some safety issues with it. And I think it's the skew. I believe intersection's supposed to be like 60 degrees to 90 degrees when you come to an intersection. I don't know what it is. I'm sure it's pretty close to 60, if not less. And, and there is some site view problems with it, and NDOT has approached us several years ago, wanting us to take over the relinquishment, and we've been not wanting to do it because of that intersection. It kind of, Michael mentioned every year that we don't do it, then we continue to leave it up to them to maintain it or facilitate it as they see fit. And I'm sure with the millions of intersections that they've got over the state, where that ranks on their list, accident-wise and importance, is, I guess it's not very high right now, because if it was, it'd be fixed.
Yeah.
So we can continue to, to buck it, let them maintain it as they see fit, and complain about it being dangerous, or we can take it over and, and do something about it, if we want to do what's best for our residents. Not that we want the road. We don't really want the road or the bridge, but we've got an opportunity to, to make some capital money on the, on the road and the bridge. If they fix it, if they fix the road and they fix the bridge, they're going to continue to offer it to us, but less money. The money that they're offering is to take it as the money it would take to, to upgrade the road and rehab the bridge.
Yeah.
So I would be in favor of taking it and pushing to make that intersection safer.
Yeah, I think so, too. And I think we can also look at that road and, you know, see if there's like a mid, midway point between a highway and a county road.
Yeah.
On where we can still suffice for that truck traffic, but not necessarily have to have a highway, you know.
Standards.
Standards. So I'd be, I'd be in favor in taking over the road and then evaluating the federal project opportunities.
Is the offer still two and a half million?
Yeah. And I, after our last meeting, I sent an email back to them asking for more funds for us to proceed with the safety grant for the intersection, if there's any more funds available for that. And if we didn't use it for that, they could have them back, but I think two and a half was as high as I could get them.
Yeah, I think the bridge was $900,000 approximately, and then the overlay was around a million approximately.
If I recall correctly, when they first started talking about this years ago, they were less than a million.
Yeah.
There is an issue at the end of that road going out to the river. We're getting all kinds of trucks down there trying to go to Purdue and getting lost. I've got several calls on homeowners that they're pulling around in their driveway, and we need to figure out how we can mitigate that somehow.
Okay.
Probably, just probably a GPS problem, it sounds like.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. We engage one, one of our consultants, so as far as a federal project, address the dead end, address that intersection, and then apply for a federal grant.
That'd give us enough money for matching on that, too, on that project, so.
From a safety issue, NDOT's not going to do anything with that interchange anytime soon.
No, and it's, and it's, and it's sort of our issue. I mean.
Now, they, they said they don't have anything planned for it. Now, they have talked about it, but they talked about it five years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, I entertain, if there's no questions, I'd entertain.
I'm ready, I'm ready.
I entertain a motion to approve their relinquishment of Old Highway 50.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero. Thank you, Chris.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
And next up, we got credit cards for dispatch. Julie, how are you?
Morning. Um, I came last year and requested credit cards on apartment. We only got one, and I was needing to see about getting one or two additional. When I have to send people to training, you know, hotel arrangements, food arrangements, it's just easier for them to have something that they're not having to pay that out of pocket.
Thanks, Chris.
And it's kind of hard to do that with just, just one credit card on our, for our, a whole department, so.
Busy, busy?
Oh, sorry. Oh, he has, wait, who's running the show?
I guess you are.
When your wife texts you, it's distracting, sorry. No offense, Julie. I'm sure he never gets distracted.
She's texting, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, when your Commissioner's wife texts you, it's distracting. Boy, this is going the wrong way. A credit card. So you have one credit card?
Yeah, I just, we have one that's for me to, you know, purchase office supplies and whatnot.
So is the other credit card going to be in someone's name, or is it?
Um, if I could get one for my assistant, and then maybe just a general one, or if you're only comfortable with giving me an additional one, just a general one.
The fewer the better. I mean, if you, if you, if you have a lot of people that are traveling and, and need those, then that's usually why we do a lot of the departmental level cards. If it's just a card where someone's going to the store or whatever, and they need the card, then we'd prefer to keep it as.
Yeah, and I, I'm the, really the only one that goes and purchases office supplies. This would just be generally for when I have to send them to trainings. I try to do as much online as we possibly can, because it obviously saves us money, but.
Can we do one for now, and then if you see that's getting problematic? Would that work?
Yeah, that can be fine, yeah.
All right, I entertain a motion.
Do we need a lemon on that one?
Yeah, probably the same lemon as Julie, at least, I guess, yeah.
Was it three or five?
I think it's three.
And then, and then you'll let him know what's, what name and everything to put that under. Okay. All right, I entertain a motion to grant an additional credit card for the central dispatch.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. All right, next up, got the airport. So I've been working with Matt Meredith. I've got a meeting this afternoon with the Lighthouse Center. Really, it's all, all a ride from the fact of trying to determine what all property the county actually owns, why do we own it, and then that, that whole methodology. So the airport's obviously going to be expanding their runway. They do have future hangar use needs. They did, been working on it for several months. The county surveyor went out there, and then they sent the, the map out to everyone as far as the land that they need. And obviously, we own, I'm making these numbers up a little bit, but say we own 100 acres out there. I think they're wanting maybe 40 acres-ish of that, and it was all on that drawing. And, and that devices their needs and their future needs. Theoretically, if we say they need to triple the size in 20 years, then obviously you've got the eminent domain and those type of rules. If, if we needed to triple the size.
It's not the airport.
At some point, we, go ahead, Michael.
I just want to, on, I don't, I don't have the map before me, but I did look at the map. I know our, on the county farm lease that we've got for the airport area, it shows 114 acres that we actually leased to a farmer. When I went back and looked at GIS, which I hadn't seen what Sean had broke down, and what, who owns what, when you go back and look at the GIS map, the county, right, really, the Commissioners really do not own 114 acres out there. Some have already been transferred to the.
Some, exactly, exactly. And this is going to help clean that up as well. So some of it's already owned by the Board of Aviation Commissioners, and that's where it gets a little confusing. So therefore, we're just deeding the rest of it.
Back over.
I did ask if there was some sort of grant or something that they could get to purchase that land, just to make it like a win-win, and with the turnover of the directors out there, we haven't been able to identify any grant opportunities.
There is, it was looking at was the north side for the east-west airstrip, and then just on the west side of the hangars, yeah. I don't have any issue with what I've seen on the drawings, but we're not talking about it.
No, it's been an issue for years. I know the Commissioners and Council approached years ago about doing an exchange for some property along I-69. The AWAS system, whenever we decide what is access and what we're going to do with it, the AWAS system goes across the line, so we're going to have to make provisions on what can and can't be constructed there, plus just the general airport. Somebody talked about, you know, you can't have livestock next to the airport, things like that. We'll have to have the normal restrictions. But no, I think it's a good idea. It's, it's, the county really shouldn't be competing with our farmers and our use for that property. Let's get to.
Yeah, because, because the theory would be, we take care of the airport needs, and then we'll see what the Lighthouse feels that they need on the very west boundary, because that's where the septic system is at. And then we'll be left with 30 to 40 acres-ish, and then we'll just go through the public, we'll decide how we want to sell it, and then we'll just put it up and sell it and.
I think so, too, because the ground, that's, that is highly productive ground up there, but the way it stands now, it's not. It needs tile, it needs drainage and everything else. So for, if the county does keep it, we need to spend money on it. If not, we just need to put, move it on to another entity, yeah.
I agree. All right, well.
I think that.
I'm sorry.
Septic system goes out into that field ways, too.
It's, it's, the septic system could rent a small town, is what I've always been told out there. Now, we're having some challenges verifying that as far as the map.
Well, I think, I think it will, but there's only one mound system there now. It's expandable. I think that's what you're talking about. It's an area that's expandable, can, in the future, do something else with more residents out there.
That can all be handled with covenants and easements.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And then if, I'll have the discussions with Mr. Audrey just afternoon as far as, because we kept it on our ground, the septic system on our ground, in case there was any issues or so forth, we can help maintain.
I think, you know, in the future, if they do want to purchase more ground, maybe they purchase septic system, too.
Yeah, I think I wanted to.
That way it take, just every year, we've got a line on in our budget trying to maintain that thing.
That's, that's the goal, is we're going to get out of the septic maintenance business and the land management business, and if we need to get it up to standard to make sure it's a totally safe system, we'll bring that back to you guys, so. Okay, well, I'd entertain a motion to relinquish the, the said airport property over to the Board of Aviation.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero. All right. Next up, we've got Vanessa Phillips, I-RAC's updates. Oh, she presented, she presented a council. All right, maybe this is for FYI. Okay, I'll follow up with Vanessa and see.
We've got a report in our package.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we'll enter that into the record. Okay, next point on the agenda is the solar ordinance. I really just want to kind of get this in front of us, just so that we can keep this thing moving forward. I might have received a few different suggestions, just via email. I've asked the APC to provide their opinion on it. It's, it sounds like I'm hearing, perhaps we model the Knox County ordinance, one just for consistency, and I guess there is a commercial and a residential component to it. If you want solar panels for your house, maybe your, your process perhaps is a little less. And I guess there is a commercial and a residential component to it. If you want solar panels for your house, maybe your, your process perhaps is a little less cumbersome. I do like the idea of having similar solar, um, ordinances from surrounding counties. Because we don't really have to worry about on the east-west border, but on the north-south border, you know, some of those fields could be overlapping and.
Right.
East-west, there is a project along two thirty-one, so about a year ago, we reached out.
I'm sorry, I meant the west.
But it is, we got one right now, it's two, two counties, right, Davis and Martin.
Yeah. So I think Green and Martin and Davies, if we could have similar ordinances to those three, 'cause we're contiguous.
Right.
Um, but I know Knox County spent an amount of time on their ordinance and so forth, so APC is gonna review the, the ordinances. Um, Sarah, uh, from Purdue Extension, um, yeah, right up there, um, is, obviously has a lot of knowledge on that as well, so, um, I'm totally up for suggestions on that, but.
It, it does address an adequate buffer area because that's the biggest complaint I get.
Biggest complaint I get too.
Make sure that the buffer.
Buffer and the drainage, um, right? Okay, so you're, you're on the APC board as well, okay, okay. Um, I asked, I asked, um, Sean if they, by the first meeting in April, uh, which is the second Tuesday, if we can get, um, an advisory opinion back from the APC.
Sounds good.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, next, uh, we got the YMCA donation. I, I told the YMCA board, I'll, I'll go ahead and handle this, um, presenting it for them. So, uh, they're in the midst of, of hiring another CEO. Long story short, the, um, HRU unit in the pool, um, has corroded and has gone out. So it was kind of an emergency repair, so it's actually, it's in the process of being repaired now. It'll be completed in May. It's one of those things, it's just the air handler decorination. All the duct worked, um, it has been corroded through, so it's fairly extensive, a project. Uh, the Y does have, um, some cash on hand that they're, they're able to contribute. Uh, we ran ahead and printed off this spreadsheet of expenses. From a high level, the YMCA has like twenty-six hundred members, um, countywide and in other counties. They have a scholarship program that will fund up to ninety percent of scholarships, so for four dollars a month, anyone can join the Y. I think before school, after school, uh, and again, completely biased towards the Y, I think is a wonderful organization. But just, uh, it's like the community good that it provides to anyone in the county who wants to use it, um, is, is there. So, uh, Bill Dobson and I and a few others are helping with the fundraising component, so I will abstain from this. Uh, they presented to the city last night. The city's going to contribute to some, some degree. Uh, twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars was the ask, uh, EDC's contributing twenty-five thousand. Um, they've applied for a number of grants. And then we're gonna hit the private component. Um, if, if and when there is a new expansion of the YMCA in the future, all of this will go along with it. So there's nothing that has to be redone. While they're doing it, they're gonna go ahead and, and remove all the old duct work, 'cause it's currently on the ceiling. The new duct work will be on the wall and they're gonna go and paint the ceiling and all that stuff while they have all that scaffolding. The scaffolding's twenty-five thousand dollars. We got three bids on it and twenty-five thousand dollars was the lowest scaffolding bid. I reached out to Garmong and they said, yeah, this is, this is your, your bid, so. Um, you can see, they're trying to think ahead. They're trying to create, um, also an endowment maintenance fund for this with this fundraiser. So the ask for the county is if the county would contribute fifty thousand dollars for this project, um, would, it is the ask. Um, I did talk to Bryant. Um, he felt it would be a good investment out of edit, um, if the commissioners chose, but. It's a can of worms, because again, can't open it up to all nonprofits. But the, the county amenities that this particular one offers as far as the youth, um, and again, it's, it gets, there's a lot of shades of, in the middle there, but. So I'm gonna be cautious with this, so no pressure at all, but the ask is if the county would contribute fifty thousand for the project.
Do we have any numbers on how much usage the pool actually gets?
Yeah, the actual pool, we don't have an actual number. We, we got numbers, these are just numbers from memories, because they do, they do have, s- this is more in the Amish community, um, as far as the numbers go. But they do have now programs for the Amish homeschooling and some of the, the Amish schools, um, and the, and rehab. So there's, I know there was a hundred and twelve from Odin and like ninety-eight from, a few hundred from the Amish district that are coming in using the pool facilities. As far as the daily use, there's no monitoring as far as how many people are going this direction versus that direction. As a user, and I know there's twenty to thirty people in the pool from ten to twelve-thirty, uh, virtually every, every day. So it's the, it's the minority of the twenty-some hundred use the pool, so it's a smaller subset of the population. And the pool is their major, is their highest.
It's getting used from all over the county.
All over the county, 'cause this campaign's gonna be county-wide and we had to get that data. Um, so it is a county-wide amenity. Otherwise, the local unit of government would really need to be the spearhead of it. But I, I am totally biased.
I have, I have no issue with funding and I think Bryant should pick up the whole tab, but that's a whole other story. But I would make a motion that we fund it.
Maybe in the future, we have, just to keep some of this stuff from reoccurring to the county.
Yeah.
Bryant maybe ought to come ask the county for that money instead of us directly doing it.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a good point. I said, I was, I'm on the donation committee, um, for the Y, so, um, and if the EDC hasn't been involved from, from that.
I don't have any issue with this at all, but I think in the future, ask in the future, maybe it should come through Bryant.
Okay, yeah.
Come back to the county, so. I don't have any issue. I would make a motion to approve that fifty thousand, 'cause it is a very well-used YMCA. I know my kids, growing up, used that facilities every week, when they was younger, so I have no issue with fifty thousand.
Understand Bryant was trained to use his money last, and that's not always the best scenario.
Well, yeah, I don't disagree, but what, so, uh, I think these are loose numbers. I mean, so I serve on that board now. So we got about a half a million dollars in cash on that, in that organization. And with the infrastructural needs up at Westgate and so forth, I know they're, they're fairly conservative with.
It's all dollars and if we wanna fund it, it really doesn't matter which product comes out of.
Yeah.
It just comes down to who controls those funds and just makes it a little easier. But no, I have no problem with it.
Okay. And, and again, the council, obviously, would have to approve this too. Um, so, okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve the fifty thousand dollars.
Out of edit, right?
Out of edit for the pool project. A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero, I'll abstain. Very great, thank you. Okay, uh, next up, the Visitors Bureau ordinance. I just wanted to get this on the agenda. I know there's, there was a meeting, um, last week regarding the Visitors Bureau. And I believe everyone's on the, on the same page now. I just wanted to make sure the ordinance was crystal clear as far as the organizational chart. Uh, that the Visitors Bureau reports to the, um, the Board of Commissioners and is, in essence, funded by the council, the fiscal body.
Right.
So we're the ones who set the policy and really kind of the, the vision, and we use, you know, we use them to do it. But, um, it is an advisory body of the Board of Commissioners and we appoint four of the seven. And then, you know, we're the ones that oversee the overall, uh, tourism, uh, component of the county, so. And the grant's working with the council as well, just to make sure that the fiscal side's crystal clear. Uh, 'cause we do have a very high-functioning Visitors Bureau now, which is great, but it's just great to know, you know, who sits where, so, and.
This sort of came up, uh, in conversations with the State Board of Accounts. We spoke directly with them before the council meeting last week. Uh, it was last Wednesday and, uh, Joe was there as well. It was a profitable, useful meeting, constructive. And there were some motions that came out of that council meeting. If I could summarize the, the funds that are currently being held, I guess, in like the, the Visitors Commission Fund, that's gonna come back to the county. It's gonna be housed with the auditor. And then, uh, secondly, they said that they wanted our processes and our ordinances cleaned up. So that it's simpler going forward to understand whose role is what. My.
That was through the State Board of Accounts or?
There was a administrative meeting with the State Board of Accounts.
Between the council and the State Board of Accounts?
Yes. And there were some email exchanges and just some, some issues that were clearly issues. And so I, I talked to the council about it and said, hey, we need to get everybody on the same page. And so it was a, it was a good meeting. Um, I guess my suggestion that I, I sent an email to the group, to council commissioners and a few others. I would like to mirror the state uniform innkeeper's tax, uh, Indiana code provision. And simply clarify where we have differences with that. So in the Indiana code, a couple of years ago, they clarified that Davis County is now nine percent. So I'd like to point back to that, but simply clarify where we are going to be different from them. I mean, for example, uh, a minimum of an annual update from the Visitors Commission. Probably coming out of this, out of this update, we'll want more frequent, um, contact with the Visitors Commission. If that's, that's your wishes as well. But just make sure that this department is intended to be a county department. Sort of operated in an unclear maybe manner in the past, but we, everybody's on the same page that it's a county department. Funds are gonna be housed with the auditor and we just need to clean up some things. Very open to your input on what and how that needs to read. Again, my thought, because the Indiana code gives us sort of a framework, I wanna utilize that, but clarify where we are different.
Yeah, sounds reasonable.
Understand that the ordinance was written in the late eighties, early nineties, the initial ordinance. And at the time, I think the first year, they took in a couple thousand dollars. Now they're approaching, well, probably four hundred thousand on an annual basis.
Yeah, we're.
Hey, well, Joe, since you're next up anyway, you mind stepping up to the podium?
Well, again, my whole point is that the ordinance needs to be updated and reflected.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So again, as I was, uh, saying, stating, um, I sent you this email and I brought copies just in case.
When did you send the email?
Uh, it was Thursday, I believe.
I also sent that same document out to you all, just so that you know.
And it, what, what I sent to you was simply, and I've got a copy I can distribute. It was basically a spreadsheet. Now, this isn't mine. This was created by one of our commission members. And this is, is just a spreadsheet showing what we've collected. Year-to-date, one of the things, um, per Grant's comment was not only did the resolution that was signed, uh, in twenty-one and the new statute in terms of our innkeeper's tax, the increase went from five to nine percent. But one and a half percent was gonna be earmarked towards a facility or special related project. So what you see in front of you is, um, this was redone by our secretary of the commission. Takes you back to two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, but if you look at the current column, seven twenty-two to six twenty-three, we've currently collected two hundred seventy-five thousand. It comes out to be about thirty-five thousand on average per month. That shows a trend about four thirteen, four fourteen will do, which is gonna be about seventy-eight, seventy-nine, maybe eighty thousand over what I budgeted for the year. And a copy of the budget's attached to what you have in front of you and you can see the line item, um, that I did in my budget to the council. So when you talk about what Grant was mentioning, about the nine percent being in the ordinance, even mind the one and a half percent.
In the Indiana code.
Yep, yep. Um, yes, I'm sorry, excuse me. What you're gonna see in these columns to the right, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, you'll see a number and it starts with a, a dash and then it goes to the four thousand twenty-eight down to a total. That's what that one and a half percent represents. To the right of that, you can see it starts with seven thousand three hundred and thirty-six forty-four and you can see what year-to-date we've collected. And that's the one and a half percent. What happened was, well, a number of things. One, uh, a foundation was formed to house that one and a half percent. The Davies County Tourism Foundation. So that's where that one and a half percent is gone. And in the administrative meeting that Grant mentioned, we had last Wednesday on the eighth, um, it was directed to move those funds to the auditor. Uh, in addition to those dollars you see there, um, when I originally met before the commissioners, and this is a long, long time ago, I talked about a property out on fifty-seven and bypassed the Ponderosa. And I'd asked for a commitment of two hundred thousand, get your support, that if I got, went to ask towards the Ponderosa building, well, you know that never happened. Well, in sync with that was the ask with the city, with the mayor. Never got to the council, but it was just, it was a gentleman's agreement, so to speak, that, hey, would you entertain the idea? In doing so, the, the Tourism Commission, um, it was the recommendation I gave that we have to pledge as well. And so we made the pledge that, okay, we'll do two hundred thousand over four years, fifty thousand a year. So what is not on this, uh, if you look to the right in green, it says ninety-five thousand five hundred and sixty-three eighty-seven. That's what has been deposited into the foundation. In addition to that amount, there was an initial five thousand, and you'll see this in a full financial that the council's gonna receive, um, to get the foundation started. But an additional amount of fifty thousand was given as our one of four pledge towards having seed money. If there was an opportunity for a property, we've got the men, money, earnest money in play. So long story short, there's gonna be approximately a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and forty thousand dollars in that account that's gonna be moved to the county. In addition to the two hundred and fifty-two, two hundred and fifty-three thousand that's currently in the commission account. So nearly four hundred thousand dollars will move back to the auditor and that's what we have on cash.
Okay.
Um, secondly, the Tourism Commission, um, went and got an EIN number for the commission and the Visitor Bureau. That will be terminated. And there were other details that came out of the administrative meeting that was very helpful. And our council did a great job of just managing the scenario and the situation, but the expectations were set. And so, uh, I've been asked to direct the commission to go ahead and get the financials prepared, uh, so we can get those sanitized at our level as well as with our partners at State Board of Accounts and to get those monies moved. What I need, and I was asked to do is, and I was told we were gonna be able to accomplish, and that is rewrite the budget. What does that look like going forward? And if we go through the budget, and, and I, I guess, it doesn't say this specifically here, but if I'm allowed, I'd like to kind of give you a review, quick review.
We can give you a, a few minutes, but go ahead.
It won't take very long. When you look at the budget, I can tell you what's pretty much been done, what's not been done. When you look at my budget, if you go to the page two, um, I presented to our council that we have a contract with the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce, and this goes back to nineteen eighty-seven when the ordinance was written, has been the operator, the manager, the administrator, kind of the, the marketer of the Visitors Bureau. That's why you see on everything, it's always been the Davies County Chamber of Commerce and Visitor. Even though the commission has been the advisory to the commissioners, that's how it was originally set up. Certainly, things have changed since then. Um, but I had put in my budget each year, from the, the first one I presented, that, you know, as we have this arrangement, we never had a true contract. We had a letter of understanding that they're gonna give X number of dollars and, and they did it last in two thousand eighteen, that they were gonna give X number of dollars to the chamber and it would increase one and a half percent each year through two thousand twenty-six. Well, over the last couple of years is our roles have expanded and I hope that you see that in our branding, in our presence around the state and the things we do and just how we're trying to market Davies County and what our, what we have to offer. I had asked for an increase, or I was gonna ask for an increase, and I did, and was approved by the commission, to move that contract to a hundred thousand. So that'd give me some extra resource to hire another staff member in our office that could be focused on chamber, which would be membership, development programs, and then a person that could be focused on the events and all things Visitors Bureau. And as we've expanded, so has our role, so that all was approved. Well, there, that was rescinded along the way in the last six months by the commission, so we never spent that. Currently, it's about sixty-five thousand. If you go down, um, you look at things such as, uh, corporate tourism, sports recreation tourism, you know, when you think about the sectional, semi-state, regional, you look at all the basketball tournaments, soccer tournaments and all the things we have, we bring in thousands of people, so we support some of those efforts. Lastly, agribiz, livestock, the Discover Downtown and so forth. What I wanna point out specifically though, when you look at facilities and tourism, there should be an M there, that's a mistake. It's not tourist center, it's tourism. But when you look at that fifty thousand dollars, that was my estimate of what. But when you look at that fifty thousand dollars, that was my estimate of what we would collect on that one and a half percent. That wasn't the fifty thousand dollar pledge, the one of four. So that was an estimate, so when you can see the total, what the budget is. We're going to have a surplus, but at least trending where our numbers are now. And your guidance will be very helpful, because my understanding is that if we enter into any contracts, the commissioners will approve contracts and the council will approve the appropriations.
Before they're agreed to.
Correct. So we're now at the place where we're going to create a contract and follow your guidance.
No, this is great, and just, it's great information, appreciate it. Nathan Gaffhardt's suggestion would just be, keep stockpiling that cash until when we have a good project. And accumulating that excess cash will be a great thing when, whenever we see that project that we want to, you know, you know, hit.
Well, the ordinance which stipulates one and a half percent legally, I don't think you can stipulate that. We can't do that by ordinance.
The resolution said, the resolution said that, but the ordinance doesn't even mention.
But no, the setup that we have with the chamber overseeing the day-to-day operation is the most cost-effective way to initiate this program. So I'm all in favor of it, and again, with the controls between the council and what we can put on, I agree, that money should be, don't spend any more money than what you have to. The goal is, is to accumulate enough to build the center.
I agree with Ron, and when the visitors bureau has, you know, multiple employees and it's busting at the seams and it needs its own director because of all the awesome stuff. Then that'll be a nice, that'll be a nice problem to have, but in the meantime.
And that's my vision, my goal in this, and that was take advantage of what we are, low-hanging fruit, as we create. So we play on our strengths, develop our weaknesses and grow this out. Lastly, I will say that with this, when we get into those type of arrangements, interestingly enough, and I won't name names just for the sake of not naming them. But I've had four counties reach out to me and ask for guidance of, how did you do that? How did you do your innkeeper's tax increase? Because we got one of the highest in the state now. People thought it might be a little aggressive. But when it hadn't moved since nineteen eighty-seven, it needed time to do. Secondly, is, hey, you have come together, how did your chamber and your visitors bureau come together? And during that questioning, it was a really tough time, the last six months has been pretty tough. So I had to laugh and say, do you really think you want to do that? But the truth is, it's a compliment to our former elected officials and those leaders that saw the vision in that, because we're kind of the model now. And interestingly enough, this is a county that's just north of us, nestled between two nice cities that are known for their falls and cabins and such. And they do over a million dollars a year in innkeeper's tax, but only take in like twenty thousand in the chamber.
Yeah.
They want to join hands with their organizations.
Well, a couple of things, Grant has had some information, and two, I just wanted to clarify, because I've heard different things from different board members. This nine percent's the highest in the state, which is not really what we want to be known for. And two, this is a tax. I've heard different board members tell me it's not a tax, but this is a tax, because we're taking money out of someone's pocket.
It's not the highest.
And then, okay. And then we get to determine what we do with that money, so that's, that's a tax. So we need to ensure that every dollar that we spend, that we took it from someone making eighteen dollars an hour, in essence. And that so therefore, when we spend it, we got to spend it very judiciously, so. And then Grant's got a feedback or some information from the council meeting, and then we'll.
Yeah, what I would ask for is just a similar motion and passage from this body as to what the council did. The code provision, there's certain functions for the fiscal bodies, certain for the executive body, I just want everybody on the same page. I'm requesting with your approval that all funds that are currently housed outside the county come back into the county, to the auditor's fund, county fund eleven twenty-seven. We're taxed under that specific Indiana code provision. And then also that we modify certain ordinances and processes so that we don't have some of these issues that we've had over the last six months. And that we move ahead in compliance with State Board of Accounts recommendations.
Yes, commissioners, that sound reasonable?
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
More shortening.
And so you need a motion or?
Please.
And so I'd entertain a motion to allow Grant to move forward with his suggestions.
I'm moving.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Commissioner Arnold, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. All right, Joe, we'll keep moving forward, buddy.
I appreciate you. And you know, it's, it's one of those things beyond, when you sit and listen, thank you guys for what you do, because you manage a lot of different topics. We need to go to.
Not very well, but we manage a lot. But thanks, Joe, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, the Visitors Bureau Board appointment, I did reach out to Nathan, Ben? D A Ram? Ram. I knew it was I H M, always forget, anyway. At Boggs, he took Jameson's spot, so I spoke with him last week. And to let him know that we're going to be appointing him to the Visitors Bureau, he was excited for that. And then I connected. Anyway, I thought I'd send an email to you, maybe, and Nathan, if not, to connect, make sure that everyone has his contact information. The new director to Boggs, so. So we just may need to make the formal appointment today to appoint Nathan and replace a Jameson to the Visitors Bureau.
I would myself wait till the ordinance is updated, because I don't know what the membership may or may not look like. And again, I look Joe to run, be the director for the Visitors Bureau. The only issue I really have with that, and I have nothing against appointing him, but there may be a conflict. That's a great asset that we have up there, and at some point in time, he may be coming to the Visitors Bureau asking for money, which he would have to recuse himself from voting. So I have to question whether that's the best appointment.
Okay.
But I would, I would basically defer to Joe on what, is that who you think should be on the board? If he is appointed today, I would ask that you personally sit down with him and give him an overview of what's taken place the last six months.
Yeah, I mean, like Dwayne Shake, for instance, I mean, a lot of the advertising and so forth goes through. Okay, well, I'll go and entertain a motion to appoint Nathan Bim to the Visitors Bureau.
I'm moving.
A Ram.
Ram.
I'll never get that off my head now. Sorry. A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor?
Aye.
A motion passes three zero. Okay, next up is our county code of ordinances. This is an annual thing that we have to do that just recodifies all the changes we make and re-numbers all of them. So, let's see it. I don't see anything on our link, but.
So I send out the ordinances that are needed to be added to that. They did get back with us on an estimate, and it's clearly an estimate, they've estimated between twelve hundred and seventeen hundred dollars. It's never been quite that high, so I've kind of questioned it, but.
Okay.
They acted as if, I don't know if it's due to the bulk, but it is higher this time.
Okay, do we want to push this off? We get an actual?
Grant, this is what we use. Grant's a big component with the use of this.
It's extremely valuable to have it published. Some counties don't have them published, and so they're just harder to find, harder to track down. I think it's reasonable for us to go back, get a firmer number, once we've told them, these are the things that are being updated. So.
I mean, that's their number. I have a question about.
Okay, we'll go ahead and table this until you guys get the actual proposal and estimate. I believe we all still want to get it codified.
We do, we definitely need to get them. We've always done it in the past, but get a firm number with a contract on it to do it.
Okay. And next up, we've got the clerk's office, it's far as shredding. I just, a great opportunity to make it more efficient. Oh, she was speaking with somebody, I can't recall who. Their current shredding is pretty manual. So this is with Piranha, they're going to be able to have a contract where they pick up five containers every two weeks, forty-eight dollars per pickup. Which is fairly reasonable, and then it would all be billed and paid out.
I may as well.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve if there's no discussion.
Still moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero. Okay, next up, we've got the Town and Montgomery Support Letter. This is for their potential future sewer project. I think we have agreed last year to fund a certain amount of that project, depending on the cost. So we'll see what the final numbers come back in at, and then we'll see what we're able to do. But I think we're all in agreement to support that project on the future expansion, so. I might entertain a motion for me to sign this letter of support.
I'm moving.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero.
Can we please get a motion to table that other?
Yeah, I entertain a motion to table the county code of ordinance.
Still moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. All right, I know Rodney is going to.
I'd like to have Rodney and maybe Dale come up too, to talk about the heating and air for the building and the doors out front.
Morning.
Morning, Rodney.
Hi, good morning.
Well, we have been experiencing some issues with our AC Smart, which runs the heating and air for the whole building. Back in July, we had a strong power surge when a transformer blew over here by the Y. And from then, it has gradually gotten worse and worse, as far as it loses data. And so when it loses data, it will either be blank and not know what, the heating system will not know what to do. So it will just kind of ride and just do its own thing, or it will input its own information. Say you set it at seventy-four degrees, you turn around, go across the room, and you come back and look, and it'll be eighty-seven. It'll change on its own. And so we've called in the.
OCS.
Thank you, yes. The ones who put the system in.
Open.
Open control system company, we called them back, they came, set a man in here. And he has diagnosed it pretty well, we ran through some tests and figured out that the AC Smart probably is damaged. And it will just continue to get worse. So what that does, it makes us so we cannot control our AC and our heat. So what we have, they kind of gave us some direction, they have one other system like this where they've had problems up in Fishers, Indiana. And they recommended that we replace the AC Smart itself. So it's a computer control head for all of our system. With that, it's going to be a large number, we're shooting probably, he didn't know, he says it's not a solid number, but he gave us an idea of seven to ten thousand. It could be more than that. I just got off the phone with Rex Burton from Buchanan Mechanical, and he had gotten some information that they may have to. And not be able to just unplug and replug a new one in, they may have to reprogram and the whole bit for this, so it could be worse. But just kind of give you an idea on that's coming up, we need to address that sometime. Any questions on that part?
I think just get some quotes for it and bring it back to us. And I don't know if that's going to be an insurance claim, or we want to pay that for ourselves.
I mean, if this is, if this was in the private sector, I mean, we would say it needs to be fixed immediately, right? So I would say find the best bid that you feel comfortable with, get it fixed, and then let us know what it costs. Because we're not going to say, I don't know what we're going to say, right?
As of right now, I mean, Rodney's manually resetting the thing and keeping it going, but one of these days, it's not going to do that, so.
I could reset it, you know, every two, three, four days, and it'll rebrain for a little while. But it's just gradually getting worse and worse where it's not going to work.
I mean, the approximate cost, I mean, we're just five figures, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's not millions.
Even if they have to program it, I don't think it'll be fifteen or fifteen, you know.
Just go get it fixed.
I think seven, eight thousand for the unit, and then whatever the labor is.
Don't bring, I mean, you can just communicate directly with me or directly with Michael, we'll update the other two. But this is a building maintenance thing, it has to be fixed, especially when the temperatures start.
Definitely not efficient.
Temperatures are start going to be hitting higher again, so.
And that's a concern.
Does this building have a surge protector?
It does not.
Building itself does not.
Why not?
I have.
It wasn't in, of course, the original design from the architect. We checked on it at one point, there was two different types of surge protectors you can buy. One that goes inline that is resettable. So if it pops, you can reset it and go, you know, you put a fix kit in it and go on. The other kind, once it pops, it's gone, you had to buy a new one. Well, we were experiencing those every two weeks. So the quote we got for, I don't even know if we ever got a quote for one that was resettable. They kept talking about it being real high, and it was.
Five thousand.
Price Electric from Bloomington, which was part of the original, and they kind of, they kind of stepped away from. So it probably just hasn't been addressed again, we could get back.
I would take a look at it, and if minimal, I'd put a surge protection on this unit.
Oh, yeah.
And if they would, and like right now, that got, that kind of all got put in before the computer room was done. If it was put in now, it would be put through the battery and everything that's in it, they would be put through the surge that the computer system's in, but it. Did it have battery?
At least on this unit.
It does not have battery, we could install a battery backup.
I think Rodney said, yeah, Rodney said they could put a battery.
If they put a new head unit in, we'll wire it right into the big stuff.
Just address it for the next time.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Go ahead and proceed forward with getting replaced protector with the surge protector, and then also look at any other high capital cost thing we have here. And if we need to get another inline surge protector, we'll start doing that one.
Because one on the building would save, well, we've, I think we've lost a couple of refrigerators in the health department a while back, a year or so ago.
I know, it's not.
Bought just regular PC units and hooked to the refrigerators, we haven't had any problems since, but.
Yeah.
We could use one on the old building.
I know we've had, we've had trouble with, I mean, you know, just a blackout, more like a brown out, so your voltage drops and stays there for a while, then goes back up, and that's hard on air.
Harder on it than a blackout, so.
I'm going to show my age a little bit, the technology is wonderful, but at the end of the day, it all saves us money. And we have so much, it seems like it just costs us more money, and we're here to support the technology and not to save the money.
The tail, tail wagging the dog. Okay, well, let's move forward with that unit, and then surge protectors, I mean, I would like to have a comprehensive overview of the entire building. As far as where do you think the surge protectors need to be? Does it need to be the entire building? Let's go ahead and go back and reevaluate that, and then get that button up, so.
Okay.
I'd entertain a motion just to allow them to proceed forward, just go ahead and, Michael, do you want to keep the lead on this one?
I could stay in contact with Rodney.
Just because you've been on this one from the beginning. Just communicate with Michael, if you get any aha moments, communicate with Michael.
Do.
We'll get at least a couple of different quotes, just so we don't run afoul of our procurement process, but get it.
Hope it fits under a certain dollar amount.
Right, and we don't know.
And just think it's timing.
And I don't know that you can on the, on the head unit for the AC Smart. That may be an open control systems.
Only.
That may be.
If you can, great.
If we can't, then we can't.
Like I said, the threshold, I don't know what the threshold is, but if it's under fifty thousand, then.
Fifty thousand dollars.
We're fine, just to go ahead and proceed. And it is kind of a, not really an emergency, but it is to get the building back up and running, all right?
Yeah. But I'd entertain a motion, allow them to proceed forward.
I'm moving.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
A motion passes three zero. All right, thanks, guys.
Then one, they want to talk about the front doors too.
Hang in front door.
Okay, now we have, we've had an issue with the front doors. Two things with it, it catches the wind very often. And so just recently, we have talked about putting stops on the door, but we didn't know exactly what type we found. So we found some, and we are contracted, put three, as far as I understand, three of them on, or one on health department and two front doors. Because the wind rips them open, bends things, it does bad things up there, so. There are U channels which have slides in them, and it can be adjusted to the depth of how far out they can go. So we're going to have those installed. Secondly, the electronic door system, we'd like to electrify the other, the right side door of the government center here coming in. One side is not, the other side is, and it would be much nicer if we could have both of them open on with a key fob, or, you know, when it's electrified like that. That way, we also run the lock systems through Dale's program, which runs throughout the building, can control it that way. Also, in those cases where it was a windy day, we would like to have a key option on the side. It is like a switch to turn that door off, so we could lock the one side, so that it is, you can go out but not in. It just lessens the chance of it getting torn away again, like it has in the past. Some of the wind gets really, really wicked around here, so.
If we do it the most cost-effective way, which is run both doors off the same reader, instead of having a reader for each door. So basically, that means one door's unlocked, they're both unlocked. So this switch would give them the capability, the one on the left going out is always the one that catches the wind, because it comes from this way. Yet there would be somewhere, there would be a key, basically, you turn that key, it breaks the electronic connection, and the lock's default position is locked. So if you take the power away from it, that door would lock, still leave the other one free for entry and exit, but you got to keep that one from getting ripped off.
And according to fire code, the doors have to open.
Yes, and they'll open.
Yeah, currently, currently, a computer program's unlocking one side and locking it back in the evening, and the other door is being manually with a key every day.
It's been like that since day one. Why they ever chose just to operate one door on that front door is kind of strange, but that's what they've done when the building is built. But I think it's probably a thing to move forward and let those guys electrify.
We had Ark sales here yesterday fixing a couple of other little problems, and actually updating the access control computer, and had him to look at it before he left, so after we talk to you, if we can move forward, then they can kind of have an idea of what we need.
Okay, it sounds reasonable. Rodney, you have any?
No.
Yeah, go ahead and proceed forward on that. Okay. Okay, anything else, gentlemen?
So we got it.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Yeah, I just want to go back up to the County Code of Ordinances, just thinking down the road. I think we can go and get this knocked out. So it looks like the original bid estimate was 1,200 to 1,800, and the reason that is, is it's $1.95 per page minimum, or a minimum, $1.95 a page, so they don't really know how much they're going to codify. It's now 1,100 to 1,700, so they dropped it 100 bucks, but the reason it's a range is because of the number of pages. So instead of coming up a future agenda.
Yep, I make a motion to approve.
That's going to approve that agreement, so in the range of 1,100 to 700 dollars. Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three zero. You know, the next meeting, we're just going to fly through.
Be a shorter, shorter agenda, right?
I'm listening. I did talk to Sky about just the parking lot. We did put electrical conduit around this south parking lot for future farmers' markets, weekend events. He's going to reach out to go ahead and get some bids to finish that out, as far as the outlets and all that stuff. And then on the Government Center etching, I said, look, don't spend a ton of time, but you can't read it. So if there is someone out there you can reach out to, to see if they can somehow make that more readable, it'd be interesting to see how much that would cost, so.
At the time we looked at that panel, I think we, the company would paint that, right? But then.
Yeah, that etching.
Paint the etching, but I think the reason we chose not to do it at the time, is just because it's going to be a maintenance thing every three to five years. Which is fine with me, I mean.
Well, we want something ideally low-cost and low-maintenance, so he's going to see what he can find and bring back to us, so.
Maybe epoxy in there or something, I don't know.
Yeah, because it needs to be, yeah. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I do have, you got anything, Rodney? I've got two parties south of town, south of Canterbury, that drainage issues, I think you know about it. I'm not going to bring up names in here, it's standard 500 South. They're still in disagreement on the way the drainage is coming across two properties.
Oh, yeah.
I would like to, for myself, and maybe Grant, just to try to set up like a little mediation between the two parties and try to resolve it, because it kind of falls on our drainage board, but it really doesn't. So if you guys are fine with it, I would just try to mediate both parties, see if we can get it resolved, if that's fine with you, or.
If it's a drainage board issue, then I have no problem with it, but I just want to make sure we're not going where we don't need to go.
It's not, it is, because we are the drainage board, and so one party is mechanically channeling water over onto another property. As long as the water is actually on surface, we can't really do anything about it, but it got mechanically channeled into a drainage.
I don't think they can legally do that.
Yeah, so that's, it does fall back on us, I don't know where our drainage is, if it's on just ditches, or.
So how about this, I mean, if you'll spearhead that, and get the data, and get the, you know, detail, and then.
I'll just kind of try to mediate it, if it doesn't work, then.
I guess my only request is if we spend time or resources on it from a county perspective, then I'd want the drainage board to give the final stamp, just so we don't.
Unless if we can, if we can mediate it, and they could come to a conclusion, and then we can bring it back to the drainage board and open it up.
You want to take that on?
I'll feel free to do it, just try to, I mean, just try to have.
I know where you're talking, where you're talking about. They put in a pipe, right?
They actually put in two dry palms on an upper elevation, and then put it in a tile, then cut the tile right at the, right at the property line. So it's causing damage on the properties, to the west of it. But I will, if you guys are fine with that, I would try to mediate the two parties, and if they could, would come to a conclusion, I'd bring it back to the drainage board.
I know, let's run once, too.
Yeah, I'll let you do it.
That's why we have the court system.
At the end of the day, it's probably.
Always there.
Yeah, at the end of the day, it's probably where it's going to wind up at, but.
Yeah, if we can help them out, then you're.
Try to help them out, and like I said, I would use my time to do it.
There will be other issues come up, or other properties that kind of have the same thing, so. Open that can, we're going to deal with it.
But if they.
I have no problem.
If they don't do it, then we could open the drainage board and discuss it, and then see what we want to do to move forward.
No, that's great, thank you for being willing to do that. Anything else from the audience? Okay, if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to approve the claims, payroll during the meeting.
So moved.
Let's do have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, meeting adjourned, have a great week, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, there's the names and so forth.
Several years ago, when I was county surveyor, they tried to put a law together to stop stuff like.